...Troy Hills Township Council Agenda Meeting, August 11th, 2015. Meeting called to order by myself at 7:30 PM. Please rise for the flag salute. Blue self you would.
Pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Carifi.
Here.
Mr. DePiero.
Here.
Mr. Peluso.
Present.
Mr. Stansett.
Here.
Mr. Valori.
Here.
Others present, Mayor James R. Barberio, L&amp;M Sandman, Business Administrator, Justin Marchetta, Esquire, filling in for Johnny Lucino, Township Attorney, Nancy Mazermas, Township Clerk, N.M. Koochie, CFO. The purpose of this meeting is to set the agenda for the regular Township Council Meeting of August 18th, 2015. Formal action mayor may not be taken.
Statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building on January 8th, 2015, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in both the Daily Record on January 12th, 2015, and the Star Ledger on January 14th, 2015, and was forwarded by fax in our local newspapers and local radio stations on January 8th, 2015. Note Council meetings are videotaped and aired on Cablevision Public Access Channel 21 at 11 o'clock AM on Sundays and are also available for viewing at www.parcipany.net.
Okay, first up, we'll be having a presentation by Lantern Environmental for FOG. Mr. Michael Hale, COO, and Peter Burle, VP of Business Development.
Want me to shut the lights off?
Please.
Good evening. Thank you for inviting us to make a presentation this evening. My name is Peter Burley. I'm the Vice President of Business Development for Lantern Environmental. And with me tonight is our COO, Michael McHale. Mike and I are at the plant every day. Before we get too deeply into this, I thought it would be important to let everyone know exactly where we are within your wastewater treatment plant. I'll describe what we're doing a little bit later. But many of you may know the wastewater treatment plant. That's the administration building. That's the 16 million gallon per day plant. That's the old 4 million gallon per day plant that is mothballed. And our site is right there. So remember this when I show you some trucks later, that they pull down this road, pull around this building, and back into our site. Okay, here's how we got involved with Parcipany, and this is really, really important to understand the timeline. In February of 2013, I met with Phil Bober because we were thinking about opening a plant at a private site, a site that would be serviced by your wastewater treatment plant. And we were talking with Phil about what the wastewater treatment charges would be to our facility had we opened it outside the gates of your plant. We had actually found a spot, I believe it was in East Hanover, I can't remember. But whatever it was, our wastewater was going to flow to your plant. So we sat down with Phil and we started talking about it, and we talked about rates and so forth and so on, and he was very, very informative. Phil was the superintendent at the time, he's since retired just recently. But then he said to us, "Why, why don't you think about locating on our site as opposed to locating off our site because we have extra room in our 4 million gallon per day plant that we no longer use?" And we said, "With all due respect, Mr. Bober, we've just tried to go through this with another publicly owned wastewater treatment plant, and we weren't able to get it done after six years, and we kind of gave up. And we're entrepreneurs, and six years is a long time, and we don't want to go through six years again." He said, "It's going to take a while, but if you can put up with it, I think it's such a good idea that you should be patient with us." And we were. So Phil presented the idea to the town. The town had to put it out to public bid. It went out to bid at least twice. We bid on it both times. And we, in March of 2014, were notified that we were the successful bidder on the public bid. After we were awarded the bid, a lease had to be drawn up. The lease was finalized by Parcipany Troy Hills in September of 2014. We filed for our wastewater permits right away with the state. They were issued January 2015. Parcipany Troy Hills issued our building permit in March of 2015, and we took our first load of material, which I'm going to describe to you in further detail, where it says, "First Load of Grease Trap Waste," GTW. That stands for Grease Trap Waste. I'll describe that in further detail in a second.
Peter, you didn't bring the samples for the council? I'm just kidding. It's a joke.
You forgot the sample.
The boss was in charge of the samples. I was in charge of the computer. From today, or July 2015 through December 2015, we'll grow from about 40,000 gallons a day to 150,000 gallons a day of grease trap waste coming into our facility. Okay. What is grease trap waste? Grease trap waste is what comes out of a grease trap which sits at the back of a restaurant or a food manufacturing facility, and what it does is it catches the grease, much like that little trap underneath your sink catches it. It catches the grease and the food before it gets into the sewer system. If grease trap waste is not properly disposed of, it can get into the sewer system and it can clog up the sewer system. So having a grease trap at the back of a restaurant or a food processing facility is really important. It's illegal to dump grease trap waste directly into the sewer system again because it clogs it up very, very quickly. It's becoming more expensive and difficult for the companies that pump the grease traps out to find places to take the grease trap waste to because the wastewater treatment plants and landfills that used to take it are charging more or even stopping taking grease trap waste altogether. The Parcipany Troy Hills wastewater treatment plant is a 16 million gallon per day plant, as I described when I showed you that picture, with about 6 million gallons of excess capacity daily. You're taking in about 9.5 million gallons of wastewater a day in a 16 million gallon plant. So you have capacity. The bid we won allows us to lease 32,000 square feet. You're going to see pictures of it later to house our FOG treatment facility. We constructed it within an existing building. It used to be known as your filter building on the wastewater treatment plant site, and we treat inbound grease trap waste. You're going to see pictures, so you'll understand more about this as we go through. What we do is we separate the grease trap waste into two fractions. One fraction is solids. It's de-watered grease trap waste. That's about 8% or 9% of the total that comes in. It's de-watered down to about 50% moist, and those solids are taken to a landfill. They can be incinerated, composted, digested, or used as alternate daily cover at a landfill. The other thing we produce is wastewater, and that wastewater gets discharged after we treat it, further treat it, it gets discharged to your wastewater treatment plant. Again, you've got the capacity to take excess wastewater, so Phil really had a good idea to bring us right on site because it gets you excess water that you'd be getting from us anyway, but now you're able to rent us a site and get it directly from us here. Okay. This is what a grease trap looks like. It's not important to understand exactly how it works, but what it does is all the wastewater from a restaurant passes through this before it hits a sewer. And because of the baffles and so forth in this, the fats, oils, and grease, and a lot of the food particles get caught up and don't get into your sewer system, or don't get into anyone's sewer system. About anywhere from once a week to once every six months, these things need to be pumped out. They can be 50 gallons, they can be 8,000 gallons. We have one that gets pumped every day, actually, that's an 8,000 gallon grease trap. They require pumping. I talked about it. It's actually mandated, and you guys can, and guys and women can help us by eventually making sure that you enforce, find a way to enforce the regulations that grease traps in Parcipany be pumped on a regular basis. What's happened before is because there's no place to manifest this grease for the pumpers to take it, the restaurants say, "We can't pump out as often as you want us to because there's nowhere to take it." Well, now we have somewhere to take it. So the laws can begin to be enforced. If they're not pumped and maintained on a regular basis, they get smelly, and sewer backups occur because they become ineffective and the fats and grease just flow right into your system. The people who pump these grease traps, I'm going to give you the names of some of them in a minute, are licensed by the State of New Jersey, the Department of Environmental Protection, and other states. And we call them colloquially "pumpers" or "haulers." So when I say a pumper, it's someone who goes and pumps out one of those grease traps, puts it in the back of a tanker truck, and brings it to us or another disposal site to manifest it into disposal. This is a really good area to do this because there's so many restaurants. This is the highest concentration of population anywhere in the United States. We draw from 20 million people, many, many restaurants. Current disposal charges by us in our competition are anywhere from 9 cents a gallon to 28 cents a gallon. We are currently, we're new. We started, as I said, we started accepting grease trap waste on June 17th. So we're brand new. We're in our seventh week, something like that. We're currently accepting from these, and if you're in the business of grease trap pumping, you'd know these names, but nobody knows them. But we accept from these eight companies and a couple others, and we're contracting with 50 more. We built up slowly. We built up slowly to make sure that everything we had worked. We have a process in our, in our factory that takes it in, we put it through a screen, we put it through the press, we de-water it, then we put the wastewater through what's called a DAF, Dissolved Air flotation device. And it's a relatively simple process. There's some chemistry involved with it, but we wanted to make sure it worked. So what we did was we contacted the biggest guys, and we're slowly feeding more and more of our material, of their material into our plant. So far, so good. Has it been perfect? No. Do things break occasionally? Does a hose pop off? Sure. Sure. But we're, as far as I'm concerned, the startup has gone a lot faster and smoother than others with which I've been involved in the past. Okay. What's the deal? What did we sign up to do? We had to bid on this, and you guys constructed a very interesting bid. We bid on it a couple of times. The bid we won consists of a 10-year lease of the space and the, and the roads around it with a five-year renewal. We pay an annual rent to the town of $161,000. There's an escalator on that. We also make an annual contribution to repave the roads around the wastewater treatment plant as our trucks wear them out. There's an inflation escalator on that as well. Plus, we pay an additional payment of a minimum of 1.4 cents a gallon for the wastewater we discharge to you. And we're allowed to discharge up to 250,000 gallons a day. So as you might remember, I said we're taking about 40,000 gallons a day now and discharging about the same amount to you. So we'll be growing as time goes on with the eight people we're working with and the 50 others we will be working with to get up closer to 250,000 gallons a day.
What does that come out to actually a day? That .014 times to 250. What's that come out to?
Okay. Play your calculator. Mike? 30, 3,000 a day maybe?
3,500.
3,500 a day, max out.
Okay. 3,500 a day. Thank you.
This is the same picture you saw before, but now you know a little bit more about what we do. Again, I'm going to repeat this because it's important. The trucks come in, this is actually called Gate C down here, it's not in the picture. They drive past your recycling area for yard waste. They come down, go around the building that we lease from you. This is our space. Pull up, back in. As part, and one of the things that was attractive to us about this and would have been to anyone who was doing this was the building comes with tanks that are internal to the building but stick out the side. There are eight tanks. Our lease includes five of the eight tanks. The tanks are about 21,000 gallons apiece. We use these tanks to hold the material as it comes in and do some chemical treatment to it. I don't know how well you can see that, but this is a queue of trucks coming around the building. There's a large truck, it's about a 7,000 gallon truck dropping off right there. That's about a 4,000 or 5,000 gallon truck getting ready to drop off, and another truck behind it. So there's a beautiful queue around the building if we happen to have three trucks at once. Doesn't happen all the time. We're going to probably take in, an average eventually, of 30 to 40 trucks a day. You may know, if you're familiar with the site, during regular working hours, the site already gets about 43 trucks an hour into the site. So we won't add substantially at all to the, we are not adding substantially to the traffic. There's a couple of trucks being unloaded at the same time. We actually have four bays where the trucks can back in, and we can unload two at a time. So two are unloading and two are getting ready to be unloaded as our guys are hooking them up. What really happens, and this is kind of, this is, these trucks have, have the ability to create pressure in their tank by turning on pressure within a pump in this part of the truck, and it just blows it right into our factory through the screen and then through the, through the process.
Five days a week?
We will operate eventually six days a week. Right now, our hours are, yeah, right now, our hours are 4:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and Saturdays by appointment. We eventually believe we'll be open on Saturdays regularly. We've only been open two Saturdays of the six weeks that we've been open so far, but it's Saturdays by appointment. Grease traps generally get pumped, not during meal hours, because the restaurant doesn't want one of these trucks, loud trucks outside during when they're serving meals. So they aren't pumped, they're pumped in the morning or they're pumped overnight. So it's convenient for us to be open at off-hours. Thus far, we've received grease. It's interesting. We've received grease from Brooklyn, Westchester, Orange Rockland County, Scranton, Pennsylvania. Most of it comes from New Jersey. But because of where we are, because of where Parcipany is, and because we're at the intersection of Route 280 and Route 80, it's a very, and Route 287 more or less, it's a very convenient place for trucks to come. So most of the big guys, the names you saw up there, the Russell Reeds and the Zudamas of the world, said to us when they looked at our place, they said, "Bullseye. This is the place to be." So we're very convenient. They're in and out very quickly. Takes about 15 minutes to unload the biggest truck. That truck will be with us for 15 minutes. That's it. I was talking to a truck driver today who had a similarly sized truck, a little bigger than this, and he said, "My God, I go down to a wastewater treatment plant in Elizabeth. I have to go through seven levels of security and drive around the plant three times, and then if I'm lucky, I'm out of there in two hours." Thank God you guys are here. I talked about what we do at the back end of our process. This is an auger that comes out of our press, our drying press. Remember I said we dry, we create about 8% of the material comes out as dry solids. It actually looks like dirt. It's actually drier than dirt. Comes out, and it is via one of these types of vehicles. There's roll-offs and, this is a 62-yard can, this is a 20-yard can, put on trucks and hauled to incinerators, composters, et cetera. But it's, it's augered right out of our building, and these, these fill up. We added this canopy in the back, and you saw in the front, we added a canopy to the building as well. Actually, in the front, it looks like, it looks a little bit like a service station. So that's, that's our entire presentation. Does anybody have any questions? Any other question?
How many gallons are you right now pumping a day out? You say you have a maximum capacity of 250,000 gallons? So what's your average right now?
Our, here's what our averages have been. In June, we averaged 17,000 gallons a day. In July, we averaged 28,000 gallons a day. Thus far, August isn't that old, but we're at 33,000 gallons a day. And we're really just turning it on. We haven't asked everybody to bring us all of their material yet because starting these machines is complex. They're running well.
And the question I was going to ask you is, how are you going to advertise out there to the rest of the surrounding community so they bring their waste to Parcipany?
We do things like we join the Long Island Liquid Waste Hallers Association, and we've been in their newsletter. We have done a mailing to every, to, to every hauler in New Jersey, Long Island and Manhattan. We're in the process of doing letters to Orange Rockland and Westchester Counties. But it's just what you might think it is if you've ever been in sales. It's, you've got to call them up and you've got to talk to them. Now, now remember, remember, these people are busy. Lot of the companies, the person who owns the company is driving the truck. So you've got to get them at a time when you can talk to them and when they're, when they're willing to listen. And this isn't like just come on over and bring it. There's insurance requirements and so forth, and, you know, we, we require that each of these companies that brings us material be vetted beforehand, be licensed, be licensed in New Jersey, and name both Parcipany and our company as additional named insureds on an insurance certificate. So all of that must happen before they're allowed to come to us. One more thing, we take a sample of every single truck that comes in. We have a sampling system, and we save, how long are we going to save the sample? 60 days. We'll save the sample for 60 days. So if there's any untoward chemistry, we'll know exactly where it came from. We've got a sample of, of every single truck. It's also a pretty complicated paperwork process. We know every restaurant it's come from. We know exactly where the material has been manifested from, and it's, there's a, there's a way to trace every drop of what we've gotten.
And just one other question, you know, I'm pleased that obviously the whole operations come together. What would you say a realistic number would be, an average would be five, six months from now? What would your goal be?
My goal, our goal, is by the end of the year to be hitting days with 150,000 gallons per day.
Okay, great.
I wouldn't say we'd be averaging that then. I would say in 2016, 120,000 gallons a day to 200, but probably average 2016, 120,000 gallons a day. We're still, we have commitments from people to get to those numbers. And thus far, every single pumper with whom we've dealt, and their, and their truck drivers, which is important as well, have expressed a great deal of pleasure in our service. I gave you one anecdote, anecdote before. We hear those every day. We're different because our location is good, we're competitive, we're no more, no less competitive than anybody else, but our service is outstanding because this is a public-private partnership. We represent the private part, and we're going so, so far to keep the drivers happy, keep their bosses happy, and, and provide the type of service that they need that, that thus far, our customers are very, very satisfied. We haven't had, for example, a lot of, there's a, there's a receiving station in Ridgewood that a number of times a month will shut down, and trucks will show up and they'll say, "Sorry, we're closed today, our system's broken. We've never turned, we, we've never turned a load away." And we've never turned a load away because our system happens to work pretty well, but also we're redundant. We have two of almost, not everything, but almost everything. So if, if something happens to be down for some reason, a pumper, you know, something's not working, there's another one right next to it. There's a back.
Great.
Give them the mic because they...
Some of the pumpers are very large, and for instance, one of the big pumpers has 300 employees. So obviously, a transportation model, as these, as the pumpers change where they're going to dump their, their material, they need to change their transportation routing. So as, as they look at where's the closest, the best, the fastest to go, they start to change the hours of operation, when they pick up, how they transport. So they're, that, that's something that these larger companies will take three, four, five, six months to really organize that transportation model to fit the new business. And obviously, the customer service is what they're looking for. They want to get in and get out, and it really helps. But that, that transportation model does take quite a bit of time. As you just roll over from, some of these customers get pumped once every six months, that six-month rotation has to go through the entire transportation model. So the smaller companies are a little bit easier, but the bigger companies will take significantly longer.
Thank you.
Um, before, before you leave, one of the things, one of the numbers that you didn't say, and I think it's important to say to the mayor and council and to the residents here about your commitment to this, and my belief in commitment usually also is tied into dollars. Can, can you let the council and the folks that are here know what kind of money that you've already invested in this?
Our, our budget is, was $4 million, and we've just about hit our budget to build the plant. That's a significant commitment, a big one. And if you came to see the plant, you'd understand how we spent $4 million. There's no, there's, there's a lot of equipment there. There's a lot going on in the plant, although the process appears relatively simple from the outside. It is straightforward. It's not, it's not overly complex. But we did spend $4 million.
Just, real...
We currently employ seven.
Okay. Just, sorry. Peter, you have, they have addressed the chair.
We currently employ seven, but I shouldn't have answered that question, should I?
I just have a, I just want to go back to some of the numbers. Sure. The annual lease, starting off at about 161,000. You said that, that figure of 250,000 gallons works out to about $3,500 a day for us. So if you, next year, you get it up to 120, that's almost half of that. So that's about 1750 a day going into the town, six days a week. In addition, five to six days a week.
In addition to the lease.
In addition, yeah.
161,000.
Correct, Mr. President.
Yeah, we're, we're talking good numbers. We're talking good numbers.
I'm glad you asked that question. I think, I, we've done the math a couple of times. It comes up to over $1 million a year in excess income if we max out.
Yep.
It's, it's...
So the goal here is to max out.
The goal here for you, for us, is to max out. We're, the public-private partnership is as aligned as it can be.
I know we talked about this years ago, so I'm glad that this is finally happening.
Mr. McHale, I just want to say that we're always looking for revenue generators, so we're happy that you invested in Parcipany. But I, I love what you said about us being the bullseye and the convenient place to do business. If we can get a quote there, because we're trying to attract business to fill our vacant offices, we truly are a convenient place to be. So, so thank for believing in Parcipany and coming to us. One question I had for you, though, was you said that the augers get their material and they put it into the roll-ups. Do those roll-ups go into our recycling plant or they go somewhere else?
No, they don't go to your recycling plant. It's not something that they, that they can handle. The stuff is...
It has...
It has characteristics that wouldn't work on that, that tipping floor.
Okay.
It's also, what goes onto that tipping floor goes to landfills, okay? And that is not the best use of our solid material because our solid material actually has some BTU and caloric value. So if it goes to an incinerator, for example, we're working with an incinerator, the state just verbally agreed to allow us to do a nine-month trial. This incinerator's at another wastewater treatment plant, and they use 20 to 35 gallons of oil a minute to supplement what they burn in their incinerator. If they can take our stuff in, they don't need any supplement. So that's a beneficial reuse of our solids material. And the regulations surrounding disposal of solids and liquids in New Jersey are highly complex, and we've been able to get through the complexity of those regulations. So it appears as if this incinerator will be doing a nine-month trial of, of this material, and they'll save themselves 20 to 35 gallons a minute while they're in operation. We're also working with another private incinerator called Covanta. You may have heard of them. They have four incinerators in the state, and they've approved our material as well. We had to produce the material before we could get people to agree to take it. So we're producing it, and they're all studying it like crazy, and they're saying, "Wow, this stuff is pretty cool. Let's go."
Thank you.
I'd just like to make a statement, if I may. Parcipany's fortunate that Phil Bober was able to convince you to come to Parcipany, number one. He truly was a visionary. Even when we upgraded our sewer treatment plant, he kept up to date on all the latest technologies to make sure that when we upgraded our plant, we had the latest of everything. And so your experience with them was positive, and, and the township has been too. So this truly is a win-win.
I think Mike would echo what you just said, so would I. Phil, Phil was an incredible visionary, and, you know, we walked in there as a couple of business guys, and he said, "Let's, you got..." got to, you got to come right here. Come on, let's do it." And he pulled out this picture and he said, "Let's go." Now, Phil left a few visions behind. And these are, this is important. You have an asset right here in this old 4 million gallon per day plant that's being studied very carefully right now by people in this room to reactivate and make it another income generating situation for the town. And we're hoping to be involved with that as well at some point. Because, you know, we're running this, we're using a little piece of this, but this could be another income generator for the town. And Phil had a great vision for it and I believe it will be fulfilled in, over the next couple of years and we'd love to be a part of it.
Thank you.
Just come up so we can, it'll be recorded.
Nick in Bures, Lake Parsippany. I had a couple of questions, predominantly environmental questions. The food, oil, grease, solid waste, for one, predominantly it's just carbon and hydrogen. I know you incinerated, burns well, it does have caloric value, but there's other uses that could possibly be used for, such as medicines like glycerin, also animal feed and also, what was the other one I had? Cosmetics too. They also, like soaps are made from these fats. Have you explored that as a more environmentally friendly use of it? Or is incineration, you know, the best option? And I had two follow-ups.
First of all, that's an incredibly good question.
Yeah, that's great.
That's a great question. We're exploring as many alternatives as exist. It's hard to feed this to animals. We'd love to feed it to animals if it made sense, but it's hard to feed it to animals. There's a whole set of regulations that you need to go through in order to do that. We're actually in another business in another state where we feed things to animals. And it's, it's to livestock. And it's not that easy. There is glycerin in there, but the glycerin is entrained in the oil. And in order to get the glycerin out of the oil, you have to get the oil out of the solids. And to get the oil out of the solids, we don't, that's not part of our process. And the reason it's not part of our process is, in the entire process, it's a fat, oil and grease processing facility, only 2% of what we get in is really fat, oil and grease. It's really oil and grease. The rest is food and water. So there's just not enough in there to take the oil and grease specifically out. And when you do, it's kind of at the lowest part of the totem pole of flat soils and greases. It's called brown grease and it's not really worth very much. It's worth about eight cents a pound right now. We happen to know a little bit about this because we have other plants and we talk about it every day. It's just not worth taking it because there's not enough of it. If it was 50% fat soils and grease, we'd take it out.
It's also a septage origin. If our consent is of septage origin, it's in that grease trap.
You have to use the mic, Lee.
The materials of a septage origin, it's in a grease trap. So it's attached to, in theory, the sewer system. So on heavy rains or backups, you can have sewage that backs up into that grease trap. Now that material is now, has come in contact with septage. So it doesn't make a very good feed substitute because it's of septage origin. And also making glycerins or medications or other things, or soaps is a little touch. Usually more virgin materials is used for that.
I'm also in the biodiesel business where we use the glycerin to make medicines and so forth. And there's just not enough fat and then glycerin in the fat to do that in this process. I wish there was.
The purification process is, you have the solids and you also have the wastewater. From the one slide, it said you would do up to 250,000 gallons. And that's a lot of water when you get down to parts per million. And you had, kind of expressed that you had some limitations in the purification process. What's the number one contaminant and what PPM level are we looking at when that water gets sent back to us?
Within our lease, we have very prescribed limits across a number of different wastewater parameters. And there's things like, and these are wastewater terms and I don't mean to confuse anybody and it would take me a long time to explain it all, but total suspended solids, BOD, that's biological oxygen demand, COD, chemical oxygen demand, and a number of other parameters that are very carefully measured every day by us and by the town. And we have to stay below a certain number, which I believe is 6,000 PPM, which is six tenths of a percent, before we give it to the town. Now remember, the town's getting in wastewater from everywhere else. That's dirty as well and the town is perfectly capable of handling the material we're giving them. You know, it is a wastewater treatment plant. And it's really important to remember that the town has a 16 million gallon per day plant, is only getting in 9 and 1/2 million gallons. So our currently 40,000 gallons a day and eventually 150 or 200 or 250,000 gallons a day makes up very little of the remaining capacity in the plant. But as the councilman said, Phil was visionary in that he went out and looked for ways to fill up the plant. And I think that's also what his vision was of that 4 million gallon per day plant. It was a way to bring more material eventually into the 16 million gallon per day plant as well.
I have just one quick question. So since the incinerators are benefiting from that BTU load, are they paying you for that or are we paying them to incinerate? That's my last.
Yeah, let's be careful, you and we and so forth. Remember, this is a public-private partnership, but it, this is we. It's not, the town doesn't benefit from us other than what we pay the town. I just want to make sure. Now, incinerators do have a tipping fee. They do charge. And our stuff happens to have a BTU value that's good for them, but it's not good enough for them that they wouldn't charge us something. That's under negotiation right now and some of it's subject to confidentiality. But we will do better with incinerators than we will at a landfill. Another really good use of this stuff is for compost and we're working with some composters. And anaerobic digestion, making biogas, methane. And we're talking to a couple of them as well. Again, we had to produce this stuff and then they have to test it 18 different ways and we've got lab reports that are 30 pages deep on this stuff. So far, so good. It's people, people like it, people want it. We'll be delivering a couple of loads to Covanta as early as next week. And within a couple of weeks, we expect to be at the public incinerator as well. So it's exciting. It's a good time.
Excuse me, sorry, I just have one last question. I know that you're dealing with a lot of volume going in and out and you hope to be up to that level where you want to be at. Just for accountabilities reasons for the township, how do we know there's safeguards in place in regards to what you're taking in and then obviously what we're getting reimbursed on? So we know that there's, you know, obviously, I'm assuming it gets registered into a system somehow and we get a print out of that?
Mm-hmm.
It's like your-
Here's what-
SNG bill, your-
Yeah, exactly. Here's what happened. There's a lot of interaction between the town and us. Again, it's a very good public-private partnership. We have a meter, an effluent meter, that measures every gallon that goes out of our plate. We have ways to double-check that to make sure that the effluent meter is accurate. We've actually been standardizing that over the last six weeks. And I think we have it nailed down. In fact, we're meeting with the wastewater superintendent on Thursday to make a final sign-off on this is how much you're getting.
So I'm sure that question will come up in the near future, so I'm glad that you obviously-
Yeah.
And just for the record, what you're not talking about getting down into the gritty, when this process was started, every Monday, not, not once a month, every Monday, we meet, we sit down with all the players and we finally brought all the players to the table. One of which is a woman by the name of Pan, who's our scientist, our lab technician, who is, has a rigor and a mandate from the state and all the certificates and the licenses that she holds. And that's why I was talking about the samples. This woman is testing everything and then we have other people that are at the table that know, you know, how to read the meters and make sure. And it is truly a great working relationship. And we want to, as we just said before, we really want it to work and everybody's there trying to make sure that we get, they get the information that we need. And I think I might have sent you a list of, because Lou had asked, you know, he was very interested in this and that's why I'm here this evening.
What you're doing down there is, it's wonderful for the town.
And there are records and documents that have been developed and where there might be a shortcoming or something that looks like, not a shortcoming so much, but hey, we'd like to get more information on this or how about that. They can't be anymore. It's by the next day, we have, they have a, we have a nice fellow who takes the, religiously takes those minutes and they are addressed point by point by point. Because the other side of this is, not only do we want to measure what's coming in, we want to make sure what we're taking in, that not only it's measured, but it's, you know, it's not doing any harm to our system.
Absolutely.
And they, you know, after you invest $4 million, you want to make sure everything's working correctly as well as all the other funds. So we, and we continue to meet every Monday and address it. So there's immediacy and as Peter has said, they're there every day. I mean, you know, and Lee does keep their records in check to make sure they're there, so.
The, there's a very specific process. It's called manifesting, that is, that you do when you take in a load. And the haulers, the guys who bring it to us, have to tell us where they got it. And we enter that info, we get a document from them that says it. We enter that information in our manifesting document, which we in turn save for the state DEB, New Jersey DEB, but we also share it with the town. We'll be sharing it monthly, we were sharing it weekly, but it was information overload. And we do the same with our solids out. Our solids, we keep very close track of how much went out, where it went, who drove it, et cetera, et cetera. This is, this is a business of very high documentation, not only by law, but just to be careful. I mean, we overkill it. One of the things I've been, I meant to say and I didn't say it is, we would welcome anyone to come visit us. I would only ask that you give us a buzz before you come, just to make sure that we're going to be there, we can give you the proper tour. And anybody who, you know, drop in, we'll be happy to sign you in and give you the tour. And also remember, you're entering, as the mayor well knows, wastewater treatment plant area that does have, we might call it a cavalcade of odors. There's a special odor with the wastewater treatment plant, a special odor for the recycling of the yard waste. And we have our own unique, not strong, but unique situation. It's not bad.
My advice is have a strong stomach. I can tell you.
It's, we're not adding or detracting from what was already there.
Yes, that's true.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll be moving on to closed session. Resolution, whereas the Open Publics Meeting Act, Public Law 1975, Chapter 31, excludes the public from a meeting in certain circumstances and whereas the township councils of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist and whereas the township council wishes to discuss attorney-client privilege and personnel matters, whereas may be kept and once the matter involving the confidentiality, the above no longer requires confidentiality, the minutes can be made public. Now therefore be resolved by the township council of the township of Parsippany Troy Hills that's publicly excluded from this meeting. Motion to adjourn and close session made by myself, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Peluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
We're recording.
Make a motion to reconvene to open session. Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Valori. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Here.
Mr. Peluso.
Here.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Did I skip somebody?
Okay, ordinances for second reading and public hearing? Questions, concerns?
My table.
Okay, status of adopted ordinances. Ordinance 2015:16. Adopted date, July 14, 2015. Mayoral action, July 16th. Effective date, August 5, 2015. Ordinance 2015:17. Adopted date, July 21, 2015. Mayoral action, July 24, 2015. Effective date, August 13, 2015. And calendar year. Ordinance 2015:18. Adopted date, July 14, 2015. Mayoral action, July 16, 2015. And effective date, August 5, 2015. Discussion reminder, scheduled meetings, August 18, 2015, 7:30 PM, regular meeting.
Yeah, I have something.
And September 15, 2015, 7:30 PM, agenda meeting. Minutes for approval, none. Mayor?
Can I just interject some real quick? Is the mayor here? Oh. Well, I'll mention it to you and then you can mention it to the mayor when he gets back in here. I know that there was the youth that were out, I guess, throughout the summer that were involved with doing the cleanup in town. I guess the mayor was down there in Lake Hiawatha, they were cleaning up the river over the weekend.
Ninth Annual Rockaway River Cleanup.
Yeah, yes. Well, anyway, I have a list of the students that were involved with doing that and obviously the mayor was down there too. And I was wondering, for next council meeting, we could give them recognition for obviously them volunteering and obviously helping out with the town to keep it beautiful.
It's a great idea.
So here's the list here.
Okay, can you put that down to Yancy?
Sure. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Hey, there. Administration?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Is it the administration?
It's Aiken, July 1, 2015, 11 AM. Seal proposals for FEMA house elevation project. Day six, rebid. Can be taken, none. Rotations, proposals, qualifications. Questions? Ordinances, none. Resolutions? Questions, concerns?
Yeah, council president, regards to the resolution dealing with the chief's contract. I know there was some portion of concerns that I still had about it and there might be some other folks here that weren't updated when we were with the finance committee-
Sure.
-discussing it. So I don't know, I had been mentioned to, obviously, Mr. Rashada earlier of how we should handle this.
Good try. Or kind of.
I wasn't sure.
If you were to discuss, obviously, a personnel matter would have to be taken into closed session. So I would advise to, for, if you want to keep it on the agenda for next time, issue the statutory, the required rights notice.
The rights notice.
We'll schedule a closed session, ask the clerk to put that on, and then you can take it properly into closed session. Come out and then deal with it.
Okay.
As you would.
Will you do that?
You could. You may also want to consider pulling it from the consent agenda as a separate item then.
Absolutely.
A non-consent agenda item?
Yes. Thank you.
Can I also ask for a copy of the minutes from the finance meeting when you pertain to the chief's contract?
I'd like a copy as well.
Yeah, I'm gonna, what was discussed there?
Every time there's a finance meeting, we get nothing and we know nothing and stuff comes out. We need to get the minutes after a finance meeting.
And send the same. Speak up.
I'm sorry, I put it out there last time. I will make sure I send another copy then.
Yeah, we did, we did follow up. I mean, I think what, we have had three, three finance-
No, but I'm saying, I guess there's something pertaining to the chief's contract that they did at finance.
Yes, yes, yes.
We have not been given.
Well, it'll, we'll have it. We'll have it.
Okay.
But I think when you go into closed session, you can talk more about, you know, more about it. That's where it needs to be fleshed out a bit.
Thank you. So council president, I guess in the meantime, you got to pull that from the consent agenda.
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
And the rights notice, Alan, you'll send that in?
We'll have, we'll do the same, same thing as what we did this evening, but on the other issue.
Okay.
Okay?
Very good.
That'll be done.
Okay, entry report.
Okay, major soil movement permit. Bank of America Route 46 West, Block 717, lots 1011. Board of Adjustments has approved major soil movement permit in conjunction with the construction Everything else is no council action.
There a resolution for that?
Yes.
Thank you. Hey, Chief Financial Officer? Anything?
You should redress the ordinances.
Yeah, we have, um, hold on one second. We have ordinances on the, um, agenda that are actually for action tonight. Let me see that.
Sure.
We have the capital ordinances.
Talk about the fact that they were moved at the meeting.
I'm sorry, thank you. Um, there are four, of which three are bond, um, ordinances, and one is a capital. They're just basically formalities. Um, they were already approved, uh, during the budget hearing, and, uh, you adopted it in the budget. I have the details, if you would like to see more details of the expenditures, one of the council members asked for that. Uh, this is just introduction, and on, and then in September, they'll be adopted. Those are the four. Now we have one more.
In, in answer also to the question, one of the questions raised, as you know, when you, uh, any of these ordinances, there's nothing charged, there's been no agreements, no contracts have been charged against these until they've been, you know, adopted, fully adopted. But these are all the items, um, point by point of what was, um, talked about and discussed during the course of the 2015 budget. So, this is ju, just a reflection on what you've already approved.
And salary ordinances?
Your attorney?
Nothing for me, Council President.
I know, uh, Mr. Anglacino, uh, may have some remarks regarding COA, uh, when he arrives, so I'll just ask the pass until he arrives.
Township offices slash committees?
Council President, we have a vacancy on the Board of Adjustment. I was prepared to offer last time the name of Millen Shaw. His resume is already a matter of record. He served the full term on the Board of Adjustment. Uh, he was dropped, replaced last time.
Millen Shaw?
Uh, Millen Shaw.
That's not his name.
I don't think Millen Shaw was ever on.
That's not who you said the last time.
That's not the name you said last time.
Not the name.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
I'm sorry, no.
No.
Amel Shaw. Amel Shaw. You're right.
Okay. You're making a motion, Mike?
So, I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Peluso.
No.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
No.
It's three yes, two no.
No. Time, I, I, can you repeat that again? I'm just.
It was a vote to appoint Emil Shaw to the vacancy on the zoning board.
Mike, I want to make a correction on that. That was no.
It was a no.
It was a no. I apologize.
Okay, so it's three no, two yes.
And, Council President, to fill that vacancy, I have, uh, someone that was of interest of, uh, in that position. And the name that I would like to nominate, that would be Nancy Snyder for that position.
Motion made by Mr. Valori. I'll second it.
Has she submitted her resume?
Yes.
I haven't seen it.
I've seen it, and I'm making the nomination. I'll forward it to you. The president, she's on the traffic committee, and she's been involved in the town doing other activities.
Well, procedurally, normally, you submit a resume before you vote on it.
Okay, I made my motion. Either you vote on it, or you don't have to vote on it.
Okay.
Just for the record, I haven't seen a resume from her either, and I have not seen a resume from Mr. Shaw as well.
Well, his is in the clerk's office, he was already served.
Well, nothing was provided.
Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
No.
Mr. Peluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
No.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, that's three yes, two no.
Okay, communications, correspondence, questions, concerns?
Yeah, quick question, regards to the, um, correspondence here with Mountain Lakes. Um, Ellen, regards to the signage over in, um, Mountain Lakes?
That meeting is coming up in September.
Yeah, did you have a date on that? So, maybe the public want that.
I think it was September 3rd. Uh, Loretta, do you remember the dates that I gave, September 3rd? Was that the date? I believe it's September 3rd.
It was September 3rd.
Yeah, I have a pretty good memory.
And I happen to been, I, I was speaking to some residents in Mountain Lakes, and what was interesting, usually you have to make a, what's it, 200-feet notification? And the folks that actually live outside those boundaries, they had no idea, and, uh, matter of fact, they were going to pass it along within the residents of the town, but they had no idea that they're trying to wreck that 40-foot sign.
It's, it, yeah, it's very sad. I mean, as I said, I had a very nice conversation with both, uh, the land use person in, in Mountain Lakes, as well as the clerk, and they were very informative, and, um, you know, uh, she's trying to get that information out, and they are trying to make sure that, um, and again, as, as you point out, ironically enough, um, three of the major homes that'll be affected happen to be Precipiny homes.
Yes.
You know, it's, it's, but.
Those are the folks that live in Rainbow Lakes there.
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah, so.
And thank you for the help with that.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thanks, thank you.
Okay, applications, any questions, issues, concerns? Okay, Mr. Anglacino is here now, so we're gonna go back to the attorney portion.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I wanted to update the council and the public, um, on affordable housing in, in Precipiny. Um, and I guess, you all know, back on March 10th, the Supreme Court in the state of New Jersey issued another landmark decision regarding affordable housing, in which the court divested the Council on Affordable Housing, known as COA, of jurisdiction regarding a cor, uh, regarding affordable housing, and, uh, transitioned, um, authority on affordable housing to the visonage superior courts. It was a, a bit of a Back to the Future moment, uh, in the sense that in 1985, uh, the Supreme Court established, or the legislature established the Council on Affordable Housing, and we transitioned jurisdiction from the courts to COA. And here we are now in 2015, transitioning jurisdiction for affordable housing from COA back to the courts, because COA has failed over the last 15 years to satisfy its statutory mandate, which is to, uh, provide constitutional requirements to each municipality in the state of New Jersey with respect to its affordable housing obligation. In the court's ruling, the court, um, enabled participating municipalities, such as Parcepiny, participating meaning municipalities have been, uh, for lack of a better phrase, good COA-compliant municipalities over the years, with the opportunity to file declaratory judgment actions seeking immunity from builders' remedy lawsuits. Builders' remedy lawsuits are lawsuits that were established by the court, uh, back in Mount Laurel II in 1983, which permit developers, uh, to sue municipalities and build multifamily housing in any zone of a municipality, so long as the site is suitable for multifamily housing. And under the builders' remedy, the developer gets a density bonus, meaning that for every one unit of affordable housing, uh, the developer is willing to build, they get four market-rate units. Uh, the court reinstituted the builders' remedy, um, but, again, gave participating municipalities such as Precipiny the opportunity to file declaratory judgment actions to obtain immunity for a period of five months. And, uh, so, we filed our declaratory judgment action timely, uh, and, uh, we appeared, uh, before Judge Hansberry back on July 31st. Precipiny was the first motion up in Morris County of all the, uh, Morris County towns, uh, and the judge, uh, made, uh, a few rulings. Number one, the judge granted Precipiny immunity from builders' remedy lawsuits through January 4 of, of 2016. Number two, uh, the judge permitted, uh, any party seeking to intervene in the lawsuit with the right to intervene. Uh, in Precipiny, Fair Share Housing Council is, is seeking to and has now intervened in the lawsuit. RD Realty, uh, was seeking to and has now intervened in the lawsuit. Uh, we don't know of any other parties who are seeking to intervene, but those two parties have now intervened in the lawsuit. Although, we did receive letters from quote-unquote "interested" parties, and we're obligated to, you know, notify those parties of our, uh, correspondence with the courts, et cetera. Uh, the court also ordered that any expert reports that are to be used, uh, in this case will have to be submitted to the court, uh, by October 5th. As the council knows, and for the benefit of the public, uh, the council took action at its last meeting, I believe, uh, to participate in a municipal consortium, uh, whereby Precipiny, along with some 200 or so other municipalities in the state, would retain the services of Dr. Purcell, um, to assist Precipiny in, um, determining what its number should be, its prospective need number, meaning the number of affordable housing units, uh, that Precipiny, uh, should be required, uh, to permit under round-three rules. Fair Share Housing Council has retained the services of Mr. Kinsey, um, to establish a number which they believe Precipiny should be obligated, uh, to permit under third-round rules. And, uh, if we are not able, uh, to get consensus among the experts, um, then the court will employ the services of Phil Keaton, who's a planner, as a special master, and the court will make a preliminary determination of need sometime in the October, early November timeframe, but that will not, uh, impact Precipiny's obligation to have an affordable housing plan submitted to the court by January 4th. What does that mean? The Fair Share Housing Council, uh, numbers, uh, and those are increased by Art Bernard, who is the expert for RD Realty. They're arguing that Precipiny owes 2,000, 2,100, uh, affordable housing units. Multiply that by four, ladies and gentlemen, and that is the amount of multifamily development that could potentially occur in Precipiny. You have approximately 7,200 multifamily units in town right now. Uh, I went to law school, I'm not a mathematician, but even I know that more than doubles, uh, the number of multifamily housing units, uh, that you would have in Precipiny if the fair share housing numbers or the Art Bernard numbers are adopted by the court. Um, we do not have Dr. Purcell's numbers yet. Uh, we anticipate that we will have them, uh, shortly. We better have them by October 5th, because that's our drop-dead date to, um, to submit that expert report, uh, to the court. Uh, you will recall that when Ed Snikus, uh, gave a presentation on this subject some months ago, uh, that he indicated that under the COA third-round rules, which were never adopted, they had a number of, I think, 368 units. Again, you multiply that by four, and that is the minimum number of units that you can expect to be constructed, uh, in Precipiny or mandated under, uh, under affordable housing. Uh, so, this is gonna be a significant issue for the community, and one that we are going to have to manage. Um, the planners are to come up with these numbers using what they call the methodology that was used by COA in round one and round two, so there is an established methodology. Um, but, it won't shock you to know that experts can disagree on, on how that methodology is applied in computing a particular number. Um, the factors that go into, you know, determining the number are jobs. Uh, you have a lot of office space in Precipiny, you have a lot of businesses in Precipiny. Uh, in places where you have a lot of offices and a lot of businesses, you can expect a higher number. The wealthier your community is, the higher the number you're gonna have. And whether you feel it or not, congratulations, Precipiny is a wealthy community when you look at socioeconomic, uh, standards of, of wealth. The other factor is vacant land. The more vacant land you have, uh, the more opportunity there is for affordable housing, and the higher your number is going to be. Now, sometimes, experts will make assumptions as, in regards to vacant land, that may not be true, and that will work to bring down the number. We may have some credits left over from prior rounds, which will have to be applied. The point is, is that, um, you know, there's gonna be a lot of work to do. So, I've spoken with Ed Snikus, and, um, given him the direction that we need to plan for a few different scenarios, because we don't have a lot of time. One is to plan for a worst-case scenario. Um, one is to plan for a thousand-unit scenario. Remember, there is a quote-unquote "1,000-unit mercy" rule, uh, in the old COA rules, um, but RD Realty is arguing, uh, and they're going to argue, and they even started to argue in court last Friday, uh, that that, uh, is, is not a hard cap, and Precipiny's number is so overwhelming that it should be well more than 1,000 units. Uh, and then applying, uh, a, a draft based on what Mr. Purcell's numbers will be. We can always, you know, come down on the number, it's harder to go up. And so, Mr. Snikus is gonna have to provide some policy options for the council, uh, who is ultimately going to have to decide, uh, where all of this housing is going to go, because you are the body who must approve the housing element and fair share plan. And again, that must be done in advance of January 4th, because it is due in court on January 4th, and the judge made it very clear that there will not be any extensions. Now, whether that pans out to be true or not, I don't know, but the judge is of the opinion, consistent with other judges in the state, that the Supreme Court, you know, wasn't, uh, putting this on an extended timeframe, um, that these plans had to be in. So, uh, Judge Hansberry's decision is consistent with, uh, judges in other counties and other vicinages, uh, so it appears, at least to me, that there may be some judicial coordination going on, which, that in and of itself is not a bad thing in terms of providing consistency throughout the state. Um, but the Supreme Court's, you know, mandate, uh, you know, was pretty clear, and work needs to be done, um, you know, pretty quickly. So, I wanted to give that update to the public, because it is a issue of significant public import, uh, and to the governing body, because I think that we're gonna have to start thinking about at least the possibility of special meetings with Mr. Snikus, um, most of them, you know, on a closed basis, uh, to consider various drafts and so forth, and policy determinations, but obviously, the final product will be, uh, will be a very, very public document. Um, so that is the, uh, the update on, on affordable housing. All in all, I might add that we actually got more time, um, than, than other municipalities in the state. We got five months, uh, from the date of our motion, uh, plus the benefit of the holidays. Uh, in other counties, these plans have to be submitted by the beginning of December. Uh, so we actually got about a month longer, and, and that still puts us on a, on a very, very accelerated, uh, time.
John, quick question. We've been asking for a while now, and I know we had dialogue going back and forth. Do we have an idea what our basic credit is for the, uh, the requirements right now? Because we still haven't gotten that number.
Yeah, I think that, you know, again, when Mr. Snikus comes in to meet with you, um, he will, he will discuss that.
Okay, can he get it to a sooner, because, I mean, this is almost like a year. I mean, we've had dialogue with him and going back and forth.
Yeah, he'll, he'll, he'll provide you, yeah.
Is it 200, 300? We're not sure.
I, I don't know. He'll have to provide you that number, but even more to the point is, you don't know what your prospective need number is. Your prospective need number is the number of units that you will have to provide between now and 2025, which is, uh, the end of what they call round three. Um, you know, and, you know, the reason why, uh, these numbers are so high is because of COA's dysfunction. Uh, round three should have been passed in 1999, so there's a pent-up, uh, demand and need, which the court has recognized, extends from 1999, and they've extended it through 2025. And when you go back 15 years, I, I mean, it just becomes, it just becomes a big number, and, you know, Precipiny, um, is, is, um, is gonna feel, you know, a very large number relative to other communities, again, because of the factors that are used and go into the methodology. But that's, you know, essentially a battle of the experts. Uh, Mr. Dr. Purcell is, is really the only, you know, and he works at Rutgers, so the, as the council knows, for the benefit of the public, the agreement between the consortium is actually between the Consortium of Municipalities and Rutgers to utilize Dr. Purcell. He has understudies as well, but they have access to both the statewide and regional data that is, is necessary, and they're familiar with that data. So, they are. He has understudies as well, but they have access to both the statewide and regional data that is necessary, and they're familiar with that data. So they are really the only experts uniquely qualified to run these numbers. And Dr. Purcell used to do these numbers for COA back when he was employed by the state, so, you know, as they say, he's the guy from the municipal perspective, and he's the only one, you know, that the municipalities are using.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
I know you said in the past, you've said schools, amount of schoolchildren that cannot be used as a factor, but what about utilities such as sewer and water? What if they say you need X amount of units, but we just don't have the water to provide to that many units? Is that our way of reducing that?
The unfortunate part for you is, in Parsippany, you have a lot of water and sewer capacity and capability, so in your particular instance, that's probably, an underscore probably, because I haven't done any analysis, is probably not going to be as limiting a factor as in other municipalities. But even in municipalities such as my hometown of Rockaway Township, that has very limited water, developers have found ways, you know, to get around that. And so, you know, it's, it may provide hurdles to implementing the housing in some municipalities, but generally, they're not insurmountable, at least relative to the Mount Laurel sites that have been designated in towns that have limited utilities. Again, Parsippany, my understanding, you know, through representing the town now for five and a half years, is that you have a large capacity of both water and sewer. And so that probably is not going to be a limiting factor here.
John, just maybe you could explain to the public, maybe enlighten them a little bit, and even the council. I know that the only large tract of land that we have left is obviously here on Waterview. Beyond that, I think, I guess we calculated, there might be like two or three acres that might be vacant in the town. I guess Mr. Snikus had given us a brief on that. So the question I have, maybe you could answer to the public, is that hypothetically, Waterview is built on, everything is obviously arranged there, that I can't obviously meet the needs for the co-re requirements. So if that's the case, then where is our obligation to put anything if there's no other land that's left? If there's two acres that are left, and they find out that obviously it's wetlands or whatever, so is that the option of a, someone who owns an apartment complex to say, hey, you know, we're going to tear it down, build those requirements, or maybe a building that's an old Class D building they want to take down and build? Is that the next, to meet those requirements? Because I think folks are confused of like, okay, we have 2,000 units that we have to meet the requirement, but if the requirement's not there, where are we going to put them at?
Well, that's a very good question, and it's a question that will be addressed, it's a very important question.
Because I know it's all in the master plan.
It's a question that will be addressed and will be played out in the battle of the experts as we start in to get into the nitty-gritty of where there is opportunity, realistic opportunity, to provide that housing. Certainly vacant land that is suitable for development is a prime target.
Yeah, absolutely. We know that. Other than that, you know, there may be redevelopment opportunities.
You have office buildings in Parsippany, some of which are Class A and brand new, others are obsolete.
But then that would be really out of our hands, then, if the owner of that building or development wants to obviously take the building down.
Yeah.
They'll have to come in front of us.
We'll see, I mean, again, we've had a lot of what they call interested parties who have submitted letters to the town saying they want it to be, you know, copied on all correspondence and so forth. And I would expect, a lot of those folks are property owners. And one thing I know about property owners and developers is they're, they can be pretty, you know, ingenious in the way they find opportunities for development. So, I mean, you know, my guess is, there's a pretty sophisticated community out there of lawyers, planners, engineers, and developers who know exactly what's going on, you know, they follow the cases and so forth. And my guess is that we're going to be getting outreach. I've already received some outreach from some folks who say, hey, we want to sit down and be part of the conversation on your plan, because we have some ideas. And so I think the market's going to come to you on that.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. But here's the follow-up, I got to ask you, is that, for example, what's, okay, the old Realogy building that JF just took over, okay? For example, that's a very large tract of lands, and say that, obviously, we have to meet the co-re requirements of 1,000 units. Now, if that building is obviously sold, it's renovated, it's taken down to the ground, and they're going to put apartments there, say 1,000 units, does that developer dictate to us to say, well, 800 of these are going to be high-end units, and 200 are going to meet the co requirement? So then we're still, we're still, obviously, on the hook for 800 more units that we owe somewhere else. So do we control that builder coming in there and say, hey, listen, if you want to build 1,000 units there, you're going to meet our co requirement? Can we direct them or dictate that?
Yeah, you're going to be.
Because I think folks get confused on that.
You're going to be asked, and that's the difference, it's a very good question.
It's getting better.
That is a function of builder's remedy versus planning, right? For municipalities who have stuck their head in the sand and decided that they just didn't want to deal with COA, they have builder's remedy lawsuits against them. And, you know, the problem from a municipality's perspective on a builder's remedy lawsuit is the town doesn't have the opportunity to plan for where housing is going to go. The developer is going to tell you where it's going to go, as long as the area is quote-unquote "suitable." When you adopt the housing element and fair share plan, you will have the opportunity to pick the sites. Now, they may not be, you know, not everybody in the community may welcome multifamily housing in a particular site, but you may think, as most municipalities do, that it's better for you to establish where that growth is going to occur based on a plan that you have input in with your professional planner, so that you're minimizing impact on the community, as opposed to developers just coming in and getting it wherever. So, you know, most municipalities, you know, want to avail themselves of a planning process. That is part of it. The other part of it is trying to reduce the number of units that you have to provide. And that's, as I say, that's a battle of the experts. That's between, that's a battle between Kinsey and Purcell, right? With Caton mediating on behalf of the judge, and the judge making a decision, the lawyers will advocate, but it's a battle of the planners. And then the judge will decide what your number is. Once the judge makes a preliminary determination, and it's a preliminary determination, it's still subject to change as you get into the nitty-gritty of, you know, going on a site-by-site kind of analysis as to where it's possible, you know, to put these kinds of projects. But the fact of the matter is, is once the judge makes a preliminary determination, then the housing plan we submit on January 4th must provide for affordable housing in accordance with the judge's preliminary determination. So if the judge says, Parsippany, your affordable housing number is 1,000, because it makes that preliminary determination in October, November, then your plan on January 4th must contain 1,000 affordable units, which is why we don't want to start that process after the judge makes a preliminary determination, because there's no time. We really need to start it now and begin to plan for various scenarios, so that when the judge does make a determination, you know, at least you've put in some time and you've had collaboration with your planner to be able to make the best, you know, possible judgment that you can for the community based upon the circumstances. Which is why we've directed Mr. Snikus to, you know, begin to work along those lines, because in Parsippany, unlike other municipalities, the numbers between COA's third round unadopted rules and what Mr. Kinsey, Mr. Bernard are saying, I mean, the gap is enormous. And in other towns, the gap isn't, you know, quite as much. But in Parsippany, it's a significant, you know, difference, which is why I think you have to be engaged with Mr. Snikus in giving him the policy direction he's going to need, and him giving you the professional planning information that you need to make policy determinations on where and how your housing element and fair share plan is going to be shaped, because around the holiday time, you know, you're going to have to take action on it. Or not, but if you don't, then the town is open to builder's remedy, and you've lost complete control. So tough issues, but ones that need to be faced nonetheless.
Thank you.
The last item, Mr. Council President, there's a resolution that we had put on concerning the zoning board of adjustment appointment. That does need to be, that actually does need to be taken, you know, to rescind that for legal reasons. I don't want to get into any.
Yeah, okay. Okay, good.
That's it.
Oh, to the back.
Page nine.
Nine, page nine, top.
Oh, yes. Yeah, it just needs to be rescinded.
Okay.
I don't.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Okay.
No, no, it needs to stay on. I just said it does need to be acted on tonight.
I have a question for you. John, I have a question for you. We were discussing through emails today about the council, how we did not confirm the reappointment of Mr. Stephen Tremble.
Tremble.
Tremble, and we did not reappoint him as labor council, but you had indicated that you rehired him. Can you tell me what township code that falls under?
Yes, I can. I had a sneaking suspicion you might ask that question.
Because I was very surprised that, you know, we didn't confirm.
4-6. Whenever he deems in the interest of the township, I'm sorry. Section 4-6, special counsel, whenever he deems the interest of the township to so require the township to turn, he may with the approval of the mayor, and within the limits of available appropriations, appoint special counsel to assist him in the preparation trial or argument of any issue, or in such capacity as he may determine.
Did, when you rehired him, did you actually have him complete the pay-to-pay laws that we adhere to in Parsippany?
I recall whether Mr. Tremble submitted, he usually does. I don't recall whether he submitted pay-to-play information.
We have that on file.
You have his on file, yeah.
When he was rehired?
He was never, like, not.
He was hired by Mr. Iglesino's firm?
Yes, but the format of that is, comes out of my office and does a great job at making sure that everybody has that pay-to-play.
Because I want to ensure we're not violating any state laws here.
Yeah, but no, we have that.
Also, do we know how much we paid him so far to date?
I am contracted to that. I mean, Mr. Tremble, you know, he does, as you know, he's a special labor counsel. There are a few areas in the law in which you typically have specialist labor is one of them. You know, that's his niche, so I don't know what he's been paid, but Mr. Tremble has served the community for a long, long, long time, for many, many years. He's a well-established and well-known labor lawyer in Morris County, worked, was Fred Knapp's partner before prosecutor, Knapp became prosecutor. Prosecutor Knapp was a labor lawyer in the county for several decades, and Mr. Tremble was a partner.
Is there any other council that we did not reappoint that you rehired?
Well, rehire them in the sense that hire them. There has not been, to my knowledge, any other special counsel.
What about lavery? There's a few, I think.
I don't know that we've utilized Mr. lavery's services.
Well, the better way to do it is, all those that you did not, yeah, so, you know.
Yeah, I don't think we've utilized Mr. lavery's services this year. I may be mistaken, I don't think so. I can't recall using his services yet this year. The only one that I.
We'll take a look at that.
Yeah, the only one I recall, and I know we've had to use, has been, has been Mr. Tremble, and some of the matters that he was working on carried over.
Ellen, can you please do me a favor? Can you tell me how much we've paid up to date?
Yeah, we're going to have that for you. Yep, absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, no, I know, just recently, just because I just signed it, in my first round, there was a $15,000 bill for Mr. Tremble that I just signed.
Okay.
But there's others, but I think that was one of the larger ones since.
Yeah, since January.
Because of that case we just talked about and a few other things.
Okay.
Okay? But we'll have that for you.
Thank you. Thanks, John.
At this time, entertain a motion, open up a public hearing.
Make motion.
Motion made by Mr. Valori, seconded by Mr. Paluso. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Have anything to say? Please come forward, state your name and address, sign in, you'll be given five minutes.
I guess I have to present a question to Mr. Iglesino. It appears that the developers now are going to pull an eminent domain deal on a town, and the town is no longer responsible, or is, a master plan is not valid anymore in a township. What is the difference if the developer comes into a town, and he gets his court case that he can build affordable housing? There's a need for affordable housing, he's going to build it under that pretext, no matter what the rents are. It should all be affordable housing. Or if there's a need in a rich community, which I, I don't understand how a rich community would have more of a demand than a poor community, that makes no sense, because people who need affordable housing are usually poor or middle-class people. So if you have a housing unit in a rich neighborhood, that housing unit should be all uniform to workers that are working in that rich or wealthy neighborhood. But in either case, the pretext of affordable housing makes everything, because what is affordable? According to one's income. So this, this whole thing, it just seems like it's purposely made to confuse and to open up the gates of lawyers and developers. But, once again, you can't develop environmentally sensitive land for affordable housing. Is Parsippany prepared for that? Do they have their environmental inventory? I mean, you need, people need water, and there's two standards. There's NJDEP, and there's a Highlands standard. And the Highlands prove that, right now, this town has a water deficit, and many towns still. And in another 10 years, you could find this out in the water department. The whole state of New Jersey is going to be in water deficit. So just because we have the illusion of having poor water, 65% of our water comes from the aquifer, the rest comes from two other sources. If we pave over our wellheads and our groundwater recharge, then we're making it ridiculous. It doesn't, it's not smart development at all. It's, it's just making everything stupid. It's not, there's no progress. And in a way, I feel sorry for you for two reasons, that you have to scramble, turn your brains into scrambled eggs to defend this town, and the other sense that we should have been, we should have maintained our Highlands' conformance, because we would have had a lot of shields and protection set up already, number one, identifying, and we still have some of it left, environmentally sensitive land that would protect us from this helter-skelter sprawl that's coming down the track. Developers, you can give a darn, as long as they get their property developed. So, and I guess you're familiar with the Dunkin' Donuts case? That's another thing. Why can't, why has this COA thing?
Is that the traffic, is that the, is that the traffic case from 1980s appellate division case?
Yeah.
Supposed to be impressed.
Granted, because it was the, the issue was so important that it could, it had to be settled by the Supreme Court. So what, what is preventing this COA thing from taking it a step further, from going to the Supreme Court?
Well, go ahead.
Is that your last question?
Yes.
All right, so affordable housing has been decided by the Supreme Court of the state of New Jersey, the Dunkin' Donuts case. Dr. Valori's supposed to be very impressed, and I know this off the top of my case. It has. The state Supreme Court is the court that has ruled now at least four times on affordable housing, most recently March 10th, which is the case that I talked about. The Dunkin' Donuts case stands for the proposition that a planning board cannot deny an application on the basis of volume of traffic, that there must be a dangerous condition at the point of ingress and egress in order for. of ingress and egress in order for the application to be denied. That's the proposition of law that the Dunkin' Donuts case stands for. But you raised a couple of very interesting points. Number one is certainly with respect to site suitability, environmental conditions absolutely need to be taken into account. Not environmental conditions as, as you, or I, or others may deem, but things like wetlands, you know, state environmental standards that present, you know, prohibitions against development are, are absolutely taken into account and can be used, frankly, to reduce our number if assumptions were made that included, say, vacant land that was undeveloped, because let's say they were all wetlands. Point one. Point two, you made a point about, you know, who can qualify? There's actually very specific regulations as to who can qualify for affordable housing based upon median incomes, and there's different levels of income. There's low, low, lower, there's at least three different levels of incomes that I'm aware of, so folks who can qualify for affordable housing are, you know, do so on a very specific basis. With respect to the Highlands, you know, we are looking at, and we will continue to look at with the planner, whether Highlands conformance may present an opportunity to enact ordinances, you know, that may, may help the town with regard to this issue. But again, as you, as you know from the last meeting, there's a little bit of a conundrum there, because we have a sewer situation that we have to remedy, and we need to get our wastewater management plan approved, and we opted out of the Highlands so that we could get that done. You know, once that's, that's done, I think there's a legitimate policy discussion to be had for opting back in. And we'll be discussing with the planner, you know, as to how to, how to do that, and what impact, if any, that might have in sort of ameliorating some of the effects of these court-ordered affordable housing requirements. And that's an issue that, that needs to be looked at, but we really need to get our wastewater management plan, you know, amended, and I think we're, we're kind of getting towards the end of that process. So, that's an issue that's, that's going to be ripe for, for conversation, you know, real soon. And, you know, listen, I think it's crazy if I can just, for one moment, go on a little policy tangent myself, that New Jersey is in a time warp. When you think about it, first of all, urban aid municipalities do not have any affordable housing requirement. You know, Newark's obligation is zero. Camden's obligation is zero, okay? And any, any urban aid municipality, no obligation. We're in a time warp as it relates to affordable housing and housing policy in the state of New Jersey. We've been trying for the last 20 years to redevelop and rebuild our urban areas. If you want tax credits for jobs creations, you have to apply, you have to be in an urban area. Since the Abbott v. Burke decision, the state education funding has been where? It's been in the urban areas. The New Jersey congressional priorities for federal funding for transportation has been where? It's been in the urban areas. The focus in New Jersey has been on transportation and infrastructure and job creation in the urban areas, and yet, we have a housing policy that puts the burden of the housing in other parts of the state. How does that make any sense? It makes no sense at all. What they should be doing is putting the housing where the investment in the infrastructure has been, where the investment in education and jobs and transportation has been. But that's what, that's not what New Jersey has done when it comes to housing. Instead, they want to put housing in, in Parsippany, or in other Morris County municipalities where there's limited access to public transportation, and there's been no state or federal investment for job creation.
The RCA addressed that.
Makes no sense.
The RCA addressed that, but they eliminated that, too.
The Regional Contribution Agreements addressed that, and that, that was a very good point, and that was a system whereby municipalities such as Parsippany could bond and sell their affordable housing obligation to receptive urban municipalities.
Half.
Half, and, and, and put it down there. And Parsippany and other Morris County municipalities back in the 80s entered into regional contribution agreements with, you know, urban municipalities in our region, mostly in Essex County.
We gave Newark $5 million to build their...
More.
Half of our obligation in Newark.
Right.
And not in Parsippany.
But, you know, I talked to Speaker Roberts, who was a speaker of the Assembly back then from South Jersey. He made sure that regional contribution agreements didn't see the light of day.
... The important figure is paper I've written today, the Dunkin' Donuts thing, ever taken...
My recollection of that case, and, and I'm really trying to impress you tonight, Mr. Homiak, because you're hitting me with a case like that cold. My recollection of that case is that it's an appellate division case from the late 80s or early 90s, and it's an important case, but it, I don't know why it didn't go to the Supreme Court. Either they didn't grant certiorari, or nobody took it up, or whatever, but that's the law.
Kim, move on. All right, see no one else come forward? Entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Oh.
Okay, not quick enough.
Nick, I'm here for Lake Parsippany. This is a topic of your interest to my heart, because my parents are on the list for special needs housing. I grew up in West New York in Hudson County, most densely populated place in the country, so I know about low-income housing. I mean, it's a little, not frustrating or startling, but it's kind of like, you know, I worked my butt off to get to Parsippany, and now I'll be paying more taxes than people who are playing for a place to live, so that got a little frustration aspect, too. And then, you know, I moved away from the inner city so I can have a suburban environment, so, you know, to try to make Parsippany into Patterson, to reach this, your point about, you know, the development of Newark, where I just graduated from Rutgers in Jersey City, who also in Hudson County. They're building, but they're building high-rise and it's high-income, and they're pushing the low come out. So, they, like you said, they have the jobs, they should have the burden.
Look at the waterfront development that's occurred in Jersey City with no affordable housing requirement.
Shocking, yeah.
I grew up in West New York. I used to chase rabbits on the river, because it was just like abandoned railroad stations. Now it's like million-dollar homes, but they didn't develop anymore, low-income.
Right.
So, I mean, that being said, the town, I, you know, the things that I made a couple notes. Now, when we do in the evaluation, obviously you said one of the issues is we have a lot of offices. Now, we also have, a lot of these office buildings are empty, so, you know, there's no jobs in them, the office buildings. Do they count by the square foot, or do they count about the number of positions? How is that counted?
Wait, can you?
Yeah, ask your, ask your questions.
Yeah, ask all your questions. That's all I need.
Then also with the, the land evaluation, because we do have some open spaces, but you can't develop on Sharky's landfill. Also, they just knocked down Greystone, or most of Greystone. Does that land now count against this? Is that land buildable towards, can we put low-income housing in that area? Also, another concern of mine is the infrastructure. I guess it ties into the Dunkin' Donuts situation, where we don't have, I mean, we have great roads, we have 878, which makes us a great target, but when you get inside that, I mean, I live in Lake Parsippany, so Parsippany roads, one way, one lane the other way. So, I had heard whispers that Lanideck Plaza was a redevelopment, you know, possibility, but if you put a bunch of houses there, where are they going to go? Then also, we have an opportunity to build something on IMS Drive, 212 units, that I understand, again, there's only one way out, they have to go 46 East, make a U-turn in Burger King, come all the way back, make another U-turn, come back to get back home, 8 o'clock in the morning, that 200 cars leaving on 46 is kind of ridiculous. So, I understand that we may have the space for it, but the infrastructure, how are we going to handle, you know, the, the onslaught of traffic added to it? And let me just see if there was any other. And then the other, I'm thinking of my parents as well, is there an opportunity to make some of this housing, like 55 and older housing, low-income housing, so that, you know, that would minimize the possibility of school truition coming into schools, and, you know, which is obviously another burden? Is 55 and older an opportunity? So, we have low-income housing. And then I guess one other point is, do we have any rent control systems in the place of Parsippany? What's the stop of there, they built this low-income housing, and then they just raised the rents? And we haven't any control of that? So, I believe those are my questions.
Okay. We don't have rent control in Parsippany, but the rents are regulated when, when a, when a unit is deed restricted for affordable housing. A lot of the COA regulations, even though COA is dysfunctional and jurisdiction is in the courts, a lot of the COA regulations that have been passed through the years are still, still going to be applicable. So, if you have a units that deed restricted, you know, the rents will be regulated under, under those regulations as opposed to local rent control ordinances.
They're the same, they're the same.
They probably, I don't know, but I would imagine that each region will differ. What they do is they, they break the state up into regions, and those regions correspond with, with what HUD does in terms of regions, and, and the numbers change based upon whatever region you're in, okay? We're in Region 2. So, Hudson County is, is a different region. Essex is part of Region 2. 55 and older, under the, under the regs, and I believe they were the round, they were part of the, this gets very complicated, they were part of the Round 3 regs, original Round 3 regs that were not overturned. Other parts of the Round 3 regs were overturned by the court. There were credits, a limited number of credits that municipalities could get for senior housing, but you couldn't fulfill your whole obligation through senior housing. You could, you could limit a port, you could satisfy a portion of your obligation through senior housing. How that's going to play out and what is available to us in terms of 55 and older, whether they be rental or fee simple properties, is an issue that we will be exploring with the planner, but it's, it's something that obviously is going to be looked at.
As I recall, you get 1.2 units of credit for a senior citizen housing.
It depends whether it's a rental or, or for sale. For the rental, you actually got two-for-one credit. It may have been a little less for senior, but if it was non-age restricted, you got two-for-one credit on the rental. So, you know, we'll have to, that'll be something, an issue that we work out with the planner. With regard to open spaces, Greystone is, is actually not available for development, as I understand the terms of the Greystone situation. That property's been turned over to, to Morris County, and so it is not available. There was a, a point where there was some contemplation that maybe it would be auctioned off, but Governor Christie decided that that was not the, the appropriate thing to do. So, the legislation that he signed, and I think he was personally involved in this, made sure that that land went to the county, and it could be used for recreational purposes, so that's not land that's available for, it will not count towards the calculation. Neither will, you know, Sharky's landfill or properties that, although they may be vacant, are, are clearly not available. The ball fields, for example, in Parsippany is not vacant land available, so those cannot be calculated, because they're deed-restricted properties, you purchased in many cases with, with open space monies. In terms of the infrastructure, I drive Parsippany Road to go to work every day. I'm at 600 Parsippany Road, so I, I go from 46 down Parsippany Road, over 80, over 287, and so I, I understand the traffic at rush hour on Parsippany Road as well as anybody, and I agree with you. You know, you've got horrendous traffic conditions in town, and, and, and that's going to be a point that is not lost on our planner as we, you know, have this negotiation regarding our number. And, you know, Dr. Purcell is going to get us draft numbers, but you can rest be assured that we are feeding him all the local knowledge that we can, so that there's an appreciation for the limited infrastructure capacity in Parsippany, particularly with, with the roads, to, to be able to handle the development. One of the things, though, in all fairness, that cuts against us, especially with office, is that residential, so the traffic experts say, and I'm not a traffic expert, but I've been listening to them for 25 years in planning board meetings, so I know what they say, and they always say that, you know, residential is less of an impact on traffic than office. And both in terms of volume, and also, you know, they're not on the same, you know, they're, they're not conflicting in terms of peak hour. So, if you're going from an office use to a residential use, it may be difficult, may be difficult to make the case that that's going to worsen the traffic condition from the office. Problem, of course, is if the office is vacant, the community is not feeling the effects, and then they will if there's residential, because they're just...
Something will be more.
Yeah, something will be more than nothing. In terms of the office space and how it's counted, that's a little beyond my, my pay grade as, as a lawyer, but again, those are issues that the planners are very conversant in, and, and those are the, the types of issues that they look at in terms of trying to establish, you know, what our number should be, and that's the kind of data and information that Dr. Purcell has and understands, both on a statewide and regional need, because the way that the affordable housing numbers are derived is that you have a statewide need that he calculates, and then you have to calculate a regional need. And then it becomes how you allocate within that region. And so, we're going to provide the local knowledge that says, you know, basically, to the extent there's a regional need, you know, not so much here, put it somewhere else, because we have these local mitigating factors. Everybody's doing that, quite frankly, and, you know, we'll just have to see how that, how that shakes out. But very good questions, and we're doing the best we can.
Okay, see no one else come forward? Entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Paluso, seconded by Mr. Valori. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ordinance 2015, calling 20.
Calling 20, and ordinance of the township of Parsippany Troy Hills, in the county of Morris, New Jersey, providing for golf courses and recreation, utility improvements in and for the township of Parsippany Troy Hills, and appropriating $3,6,403, therefore, and providing for the issuance of $2,856,083 in bonds or notes of the township of Parsippany Troy Hills to finance the same. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting of the township council of the township of Parsippany Troy Hills, held on August 11, 2015, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on September 15, 2015, at 7:30 p.m. prevailing time, or as soon thereafter as matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance, with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution.
Second. Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Before I vote on this, I just want to note that I'm not a fan of bonding. You know, one of the things that I did is I do diligence to speak with the CMFO today. We are paying down our bonding debt, which I was very happy to hear, and we do have the reserve requirements that would be for down payments on these items. One of the items that's included here is a driving range, which I believe could be a revenue generator for our municipality, so it's an investment that we're making into the golf course. Additionally, I asked that we ensure that a third party is a managing company that can actually create revenue from this driving range. So, I vote yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
An ordinance of the township of Parsippany Troy Hills, in the county of Morris, New Jersey, providing for various water utility improvements for the township of Parsippany Troy Hills, and appropriating $2,120,000, therefore, and providing for the issuance of $1,995,000 in general improvement bonds or notes of the township of Parsippany Troy Hills to finance the same. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, passed on first reading at a meeting of the township council of the township of Parsippany Troy Hills, held on August 11, 2015, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final pass at a meeting to be held on September 15, 2015, at 7:30 p.m. prevailing time, or as soon thereafter as the matter has been reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning this ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise the said ordinance, with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution.
Motion made by Mr. Paluso, seconded by Mr. Valori. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes. Ordinance of the township of Parsippany Troy Hills, in the county of Morris, New Jersey, providing various capital improvements for the township of Parsippany Troy Hills, appropriating $9,863,381, therefore, provided for the issuance of $9,294,211, general improvement bonds or notes of the township of Parsippany Troy Hills to finance the same. Be it resolved said ordinance be introduced, read by title, passed on first reading at a meeting of the township council, township of Parsippany Troy Hills, August 11, 2015, said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held September 15, 2015, 7:30 p.m. prevailing time, sooner afterwards matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, which all persons interested shall be given opportunity... be given opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized, directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law.
Motion. Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded, seconded by Mr. Valori, roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
I'd like to just make another statement because it's a sizable dollar amount. I want to ensure that the public knows that this dollar amount includes parks and forestry, street and roads, sanitation department, additional ambulances for health and safety, engineering, police, and engineering for new roads and reconstructions. So it's, it's a vital part of approving this in order to keep our community safe and to replace our equipment, to keep our employees safe as well. So I vote yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes. Board. Ordinance 2015: colon 23, an ordinance of the township of Parsippany Troy Hills in the county of Morris, New Jersey, appropriating $580,000 for various sewer utility capital improvements. Be it resolved that the above ordinance is introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting of the township council, the township of Parsippany Troy Hills, held on August 11, 2015, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on September 15, 2015, at 7:30 PM prevailing time, or as soon thereafter as the matter be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Valori, seconded by Mr. Paluso, roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
DePiero.
Ordinance 2015: colon 24, an ordinance establishing white-collar salary ranges. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting of the township council of the township of Parsippany Troy Hills held on August 11, 2015, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on September 15, 2015, at 7:30 PM prevailing time, or as soon thereafter as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Stanton, roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Resolution 2015-134, resolution of the township council of the township of Parsippany Troy Hills, rescinding the appointment of Frank Prier to the zoning board of adjustment. Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Paluso.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Valori, roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Stanton.
Or 2015-135, resolution township council, township of Parsippany Troy Hills, authorizing online auction for surplus property.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. DePiero, roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Board.
Resolution 2015-136, resolution of the township council of the township of Parsippany Troy Hills, approving and authorizing retail liquor license renewal for their licensing term July 1, 2015, through June 2000, June 30, 2016, at the Hyatt House.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Valori, seconded by Mr. Stanton, roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
At this time, we'll be going back into closed session.
No. Okay. Concerning the RD Realty case.
I didn't know about that.
Resolution whereas the Open Public Meeting Act, public laws of 1975, Chapter 231, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the township council is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the township council wishes to discuss attorney-client privilege and personnel, attorney-client privilege.